Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call this meeting of the Board and Board of Education to order. It is Monday, September 5th at 6:00 PM. We could all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Listrow, will you concede us?
I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You could please follow the roll.
Jessica Stanley.
Here.
No, okay.
Here.
Joseph Listrow.
Here.
Anthony Kane with the C.
Yo.
Monica Dalton.
Here.
Anthony Kane with the K.
Here.
Ms. Barbara Moreno.
Here.
Andy Parker.
Yeah.
Diana Reda.
Here.
Ms. Sanz. We could please take a moment of meditation. Keep all our students and families and teachers in your prayers or your thoughts while they open up school. Thank you. Call with participation. Ms. Janice Bertieri.
Good evening, I'm Janice Bertieri. I reside at 129 Amherst Street. I'm a mother of six children here in New Britain. Four who attend CSDNB, two at Crack ASI. I'm a fourth year president of the Holmes PTA and a commissioner for Youth and Family Services. I became aware last week that there is no longer an honors team at Pulaski. It feels like the CSDNB is experimenting with my daughter's education in a way that is doing her harm. If this is what we're doing, getting rid of honors, then HAWS should be dismantled. Those students are receiving a higher quality education with engaging activities. A much better ratio where their basic needs, like feeling safe and having access to bathrooms, are being met. Unlike at Pulaski. Having a program like HAWS is neither equal nor equitable. Getting into HAWS is also corruptible process that lacks transparency. The Pulaski students and families are getting the message loud and clear that we are less than. We have crammed our students into a building with over 900-plus students. We allow bathroom monitors to mock students and wield power over access to the bathroom. When groups of students misbehave, we take the entire, the activities from the entire grade away. We instruct certain teachers not to walk in the hall during transition because it isn't safe due to the ongoing violence at the school. Yet we tell our parents the students will adjust. Eventually, they do. They become numb to the heads getting smashed and the teachers being brutalized. We need students, we denied students access to both band and chorus last year while HAWS could do both. We also didn't even have something simple like pushing our students to read over the summer and giving assignments. However, they do that at HAWS and Crack ASI. Even with all of this and much more, our family chose Pulaski again this year over a spot at Crack ASI for my daughter. She wants to be a part of the fabric of this community. She wants to go to New Britain High School and be a proud member of the marching band. We felt like together we could ride out one more year. Had we known that the honors team was being dismantled, we would not have made the same choice. It was difficult enough for Sophia to receive individualized education last year that pushed her and created growth. She maintained straight A's without batting an eyelash while being bored every step of the way. The focus was clearly on improving eye-ready test scores and not fostering lifelong learners. Pulaski feels broken to me and the fixes feel so big, I'm struggling to trust our district to do the right thing. This is why I've chosen to send my sixth grader to Crack ASI with his brother who is a junior. I do not believe magnet schools are the answer. I hate sending my children there. I want to be able to send them to the schools in our district where they are well-educated and safe. However, that is just not what is happening at the middle school level at this time. I welcome further discussion on this topic and I will be emailing you some details that I do not wish to share publicly. Thank you for your time. And if I could just take a moment to thank Mrs. Corbo, Mrs. Plaza, Mrs. Simone, Mrs. Henry, Mr. Olivera, Mr. Gibson, Mr. Harrison, Ms. Emra, Ms. Simone, Mrs. Atola, Ms. Ayance, and Coach Carlson. That came from my kids, two of which went to Pulaski. Those people, we know that this is a struggle. There's a lot of layers to the fixes, but we appreciate our educators and those in particular made a difference for my daughters. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to address the board? Is there anyone else who would like to address the board? One more time. Is there anyone else who would like to address the board? Thank you. Moving on to committee reports. I don't believe we have committee. No, okay. Any board reports? First football game in Suddington on Thursday? You should be there. Mr. Listrow.
Just sending a big thank you to all the community greeters on the first day of school. There's a lot of partnerships and a lot of people that came out to welcome all of our students, elementary through high school, back to school. It was really nice to be out there and see everyone. Welcome to kids.
Santana.
You know, I just wanted to say I was a part of something very beautiful over the weekend and I just wanted to say kudos to the New Britain School students that participated because they were working alongside with us. Goya Cares actually donated 7,000 pounds of food to the city of New Britain. And on Saturday, HRA and, you know, God bless her and the wisdom of former board member Erin Elizabeth Stewart, who is actually our current mayor, who actually made this all come together. New Britain is the honored city for the Puerto Rican parade this year and she made sure that we all tied in together, just putting these bags together. HRA stepped up. We were able to get together, put all these bags. And there were students there with us bagging. I loved it. So I just want to say thank you to the kids that came out, helped us old folks, even the ones with a limp, and being able to just get us with the bags, all bags, and donate it and it was done earlier today at 1:00. So came together at MB's stadium. So thank you to the students.
Thank you.
Attended convocation. Nice job on the speech for the board. And I want to say I, it just gave me chills with the students that performed there. And yes, I unashamedly got up and got downed. Because it was just so refreshing to see how talented they are and what they can do. And it was wonderful. And I dare anybody that doesn't hear that drumbeat not to get chills. So first football game, yes, is Thursday. They're absolutely in the stands, so.
I also did attend the first day of schools. I visited two different schools and it was just great seeing all the kids and all the excitement. The back-to-school bash was a lot of fun. It was really nice connecting with a lot of the families. And I also attended Saturday about five hours of bagging and organizing seven tons of food. That was a lot of fun, but it was good to see some young people there helping out as well.
That's awesome. Anybody else? Superintendent's report.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the school year. Very happy to get our school year underway. I want to begin with adding my thanks to the community members and members of the board who joined us on the first day for greeting our kids. So wonderful to see so many community members, but also really so many smiling faces. I want to say thank you to Mayor Stewart. As I informed the board, she has budge some additional financial support to help us with the increased need for some paraeducators for our youngest children. I'm thankful for that. As the board is already aware, we will be having an early dismissal tomorrow based on the heat. It's my goal perhaps before I'm no longer your superintendent that we could air-condition every one of our schools. We can all have a goal. The board will be hearing a report on its facilities within about a month's time and I hope that we can make that a goal to work towards and then we wouldn't have to worry about these hot, high-temperature days. As was mentioned by Ms. Marino, I want to pay a special thanks to Dr. Toro and CCSU for hosting convocation. I believe the change of venue was a really big improvement to be able to have all of our staff.
And my neighbors, thank you for the parking.
Have all of our staff in one spot and have the parking really work much, much better. I know that she and her team would be willing to have us again. I'm considering actually bringing a proposed calendar to the board sooner than we have in previous years so that we can lock down convocation day and then check that against CCSU. I think this year it was a close call. I think we missed move-in day for the freshmen only by a few days. So if our convocation happens to be on a move-in day for CCSU, it probably would not work unless we wanted to have it at 6:00 AM or something like that. I want to say once again, I want to give a thank you to Ms. Christina DeNegre, who is joining us for the last time at a board meeting tonight. Ms. DeNegre, thank you for your service to the Consolidated School District of New Britain and best of luck in New Haven. And then finally, board members, as has become our tradition for my report to you, thank you to Ms. Langer and the communication staff. You've got a preview of the district dispatch, which I think continues to look like a nationally published magazine thanks to the talented people in that department. It's obviously an abridged version for so early in the school year, but lots of great photos of our first day of convocation, of Ed Rising, a nice profile for Mr. Russell Taylor, our new security manager, and some of his staff, and of course, some department updates. So with that, that'll conclude my report for this evening. Thank you, Madam President.
I have a question about the, again, early dismissal tomorrow. Is that going to be like on a day-by-day? Because I know my guys are going the next two days. So is that just a day-by-day type?
So I'll be making the decision one day at a time just in case the forecast changes. Do try to give everybody as much notice as possible.
Yeah, Thursday at 1:00 for possible thunderstorm which might break the heat waves.
Oh, good. And does that quantify the after-school problems I do?
So we treat it just as though it were a, it were a snow day that caused us to dismiss early, you know? So outside activities will be either canceled or greatly curtailed, but we're looking at each one, one by one. So for example, I'll be looking to our health experts about the football game on Thursday night. Will it be cool enough by then to be safe? So obviously, our health people will be in touch with Suddington's health people to make a determination.
Is there an number of hours that you have to have a kid in school to account as a legal day?
No, there used to be. Many, many years ago, there was a law that said four hours. That actually got changed after one fateful ice storm, which I believe that probably would have been the early 2000s where superintendents kept kids in school.
They did.
And then we had, we had school buses stuck on I-84 until 9:00 at night.
And my daughter and her little four-wheel drive, yes.
And the reason superintendents kept kids at school for hours is for the legal school day because if it didn't count, then every board of education in the state would have had to pay their bus contract for an extra day, their teacher's contract for an extra day. It would have been very, very expensive. So we recently had an example of that. So the day that, we had a power outage last year at New Britain High School. As long as the kids report and it's a scheduled day, it counts. So on that day, the kids were only with us for about an hour or so. But that counts. Because if it didn't count, the board would incur the cost for running all of our buses for an additional day, paying our teachers for an additional day, all of our staff for an additional day. So it's good that that law has changed. The 900 hours in a year and 180 days in a year remain. And of course, we're well over that $900 threshold. So that's my report for this evening.
Thank you. Is there like a motion to go into executive session with the full board and Dr. Gasper?
And Ms. Velazquez, please.
Ms. Velazquez, and then we would invite back?
The candidate after. Afterwards.
After.
I move second.
All those in favor. We shall be back. All right, we on our back. I would accept a motion to appoint Kristi Borderlow as the Academics and Accountability Officer, PK 35.
I move second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? We have one opposed. Santana. All right, motion carried.
Congratulations.
Welcome aboard. All right, so moving on to new business. Is there a motion to approve the minutes from the regular Board of Education meeting on August 14th, 2023?
So moved.
Wow, you guys gave us a lot of time.
I know. Any items to make, you know, to change or anything? Perfect. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Are we considering board acceptance, the consent agenda? Or is it just we have to go from each? All right, so is there a motion to accept the enrollment report?
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Moving on to item C. May I have a motion to accept the report of personal transactions and extracurricular appointments?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Is there a motion to accept the financial report from August 31st, 2023?
So moved. Second.
So this is actually as of July? So we will, I'm not quite sure. You have to remove it? Make a motion to remove? I'm not quite sure how we handle that because it's actually from July.
Will we amend the motion to accept it?
I'm not sure of the question.
So it's actually, it says for August, but it's actually as of July?
So it's the finances through the end of July, which means it's the report that's available in August.
Okay. Then we're good. So it's as of August, end of July. So it's the report that's due, right, okay.
And the final filing, do you do again September, you said?
We have filed. Correct?
So you should have it in the October meeting?
Correct.
Correct. We filed just days ago. I believe it was, as of September 1, we're required to file with the state the end of, the final report for the previous fiscal year's expenses. We have to file by September 1. So that full report will be available to the board at its next regular meeting. Probably first at the Finance Committee and then at the, and then at the full board meeting.
And I'm sorry, I noticed the transaction activity in whatever, I know it says basically approval, but during summer authority, there was no board approval. So are those, are there the transfers between accounts?
So I don't think we made any transfers under summer authority. You received three updates over the summer with a listing of POs and such. We did not make any transfers under summer authority.
Oh, okay. Because I thought we'd have to balance out accounts.
We would, and that's what's coming.
Thank you.
It's a little bit out of sequence, but it is the normal order of operations.
That's, yeah, no, I know you gave me the chart. That's what I was confirming, thank you.
Yep.
Any other comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Moving on to item E. Like a motion to accept a grant from Partners in Social Research LLC to implement teen pregnancy prevention programs district-wide.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Only that, this is a grant that's somewhat overseen by an advisory committee and I believe there are two or three board members who have been invited to sit on that advisory committee. So this is, this is connected to that work.
Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Moving on to item F. Is there a motion to accept the memorandum of understanding between CSDNB and Local 2407, New Britain Federation of Paraeducators regarding compensation for professional development?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Item G. Is there a motion to approve a contract and purchase order between CSDNB and SREB to provide feedback, professional development, and instructional coaching to teachers at New Britain High School in the amount of $29,700?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Item H. Is there a motion to approve a purchase order between CSDNB and Action Air for Slade HVAC project in the amount of $4,296,500?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
So just some clarification. This is a project already approved by the board for this amount. We've, Ms. Gonzalez and I have struggled a little bit over the summer of getting individual purchase orders to you to be paid in a timely way when requested by these contractors as they submit their POs. So because the project has already been approved for this amount, we're requesting a blanket PO to basically spend down the already approved amount of the project.
And just to be clear, this is not air-conditioning? It's just to fix what's there?
Correct, this is not an upgrade to air-conditioning as the weather report would, would have us asking. No, it's really just an upgrade of the existing air handlers and heating units.
Question, is this?
Fans, thank you.
Is this, I thought I saw something through CAPE about everybody has got to update HVAC like 2025, 2026? This is part of that?
So it's, you are correct. And the pause in my voice is about the doubt of that being financially viable statewide. So we've heard about grants from the State Department that sound like large amounts, which to me are really just a drop in the bucket. So we have here a five, nearly a four-and-a-half million dollar expense for one school in one district.
And not air-conditioning.
That's just for an upgrade, right?
Yeah, you are correct in your reading of, of the CAPE materials. I am hopeful that the legislature will gain a better understanding of the practicalities, of the practicalities of the laws that have been passed.
Even American, just wondering, we refurbish, rebuild schools like Chamberlain now homes. Are we adding air conditioning to the building?
Yes, so our newest renovations are air-conditioned schools. The high school is, but other than that, places like Smalley, Gaffney, Chamberlain, the most newly renovated schools are air-conditioned.
So eventually, our schools will be someday.
So again, you have a, you have a facilities report coming before you and this, and this really is, just for, to take a little bit of, of a sidestep here. This really is the purview of the board. So just to clarify for perhaps new and sitting board members, the role of the board in the construction process is to design what are called the ED specs, the educational specifications. That's within your purview. So you get to decide if you want a smartboard or a projector in every class. You get to decide if you want every kindergarten classroom to have its own bathroom. These are part of the ED specs. Once the board ratifies that, then it becomes the work of the city-based school building committee to manage the construction process, the bidding, the architecture. So when you ask, will we have it? I'm going to answer your question with a question. Will we? Because that is, that is the purview of the board, is to set those ED specs.
Oh. Mr. Kane.
Yeah, just a question, not to get too into the specifications of Slade, but is it completely forced air? Is it radiator? Is it mix as far as forced air?
Yes.
Okay, so it would just be a matter of equipment as far as in the future, the possibility of having air conditioning? Because the ductwork already exists, is what I'm saying.
Correct. Air conditioning, what this project is about for us to do is really upgrade all of our mechanicals and air ventilation in the actual classrooms because some of the fans have not worked properly for many years. So that will bring up a lot of makeup air into the building and proper airflow. Better is going to be better. Actually, the work is going to be better in the building. But it's not happening until October because we're still wiring new equipment and clocks and so forth. So there's a lot that we still have to do in the project. But come October, you will have proper airflow, more air conditioning, airflow.
Gotcha, thank you.
And so the homes, are they going to be air-conditioned?
Yes, yes. Just keep that in mind when you go through those ED specs. I don't know, I don't know who's next. I can't keep track. But when we do the ED specs, just make sure.
Okay, but do you do that as part of that building assessment?
We're getting their reports, you know?
We're getting, no, no, no.
It's not done, but it's coming, yes.
Yes, it was included. I thought that was the discussion.
Yep.
Right, but when we do the ED specs for the next school to be remodeled, you just have to make sure it's in there. All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carried.
I'm just, I'm a good operator.
Item aye. Is there a motion for, to approve a contract between Bridge the Gap Educational Consulting LLC and CSDNB to provide instructional coaching for special education teachers at Chamberlain Elementary School in the amount of $22,680?
Yes.
Please, so moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Item J. Like a motion to approve a purchase order between CSDNB and Horton Mifflin Hall Court for purchase of Read 180 intervention class to improve students' reading abilities for Pulaski Middle School in the amount of $31,245.14.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, I just, quick question. I know we use 180. Did we, we did Slade last?
Correct, so a delay by the vendor didn't get us both, both POs at the same time. At the last meeting, the board approved this for Slade School.
Oh, yeah.
And this is, this is, you know, the intent was always to do them both, but for some reason, the vendor sent us PO, this PO later than the other.
Perfect. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right. So closing in adjournment. Item A, other business as permitted by law.
So I would like to make a motion to amend the agenda, to add an item submitted previously to discuss and possibly take action and getting, looking into a consultant to discuss and develop Dr. Gasper's goals and expectations for the current school year.
So first, it's like a motion to amend the agenda to add an item. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right. So now your motion.
Yes.
I'll read it. Hold on, I don't have my glasses on and I'm flipping through.
Zoom in.
Zoom in. I know.
Arrow in.
All right. Is there a motion for discussion and possible action regarding the board engaging a consultant for the purposes of developing and finalizing the board's annual goals for the superintendent?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Do we have the funds for it?
Okay, well, my understanding, I know there was a lot of text messages and stuff and whatever going on and I'm not used to that kind of communication. Corporate life doesn't do that. But I, my understanding was you identified there that...
There is a consultant who is roughly $125 an hour?
Right. And, you know, for that, for even max four hours is $500. And we've even tonight spent more money on training for other items that I feel this is important. You know, unfortunately, everybody, they gave me the CAPE stuff to read about being a good board member and what you need to do and everything else. And throughout the information here, it highlights very strongly that it is our role, it is our duty to set the standard, set the goals for not only Dr. Gasper, but for the district and what we expect. So I do think that that's an important task that we as a board should discuss and possibly, and I think you and I discussed, sir, utilizing the assistance of someone who can help us make it so that it is relative and viable and with someone who's had the experience, which I believe did the gentleman in question. and with someone who's had the experience, which I believe the gentleman in question does. And he's been used before by the board. Effectively, quite well. So I feel it's extremely important that we do that and assess for us as well what our priorities are and what we're looking to do. As I see it, we're the top of the food chain. And rising this district up from the bottom is not just Dr. Gasper's responsibility, the men and women sitting in front of us, the thousands of staff. It starts with us. So I feel it's really important that we come together. And I've been encouraged by the conversations we've had in the other room that we can do this. We just may need a little help understanding how to do it.
I just question the cost. Tonight, we heard, you know, a great program that got eliminated, and I'm sure cost was a factor. Other times where we invoked other things and cost was an issue. And in a couple of months, we're losing a major grant that's been up on our program. So we got to look at expenses. And even at $125 an hour, how is it supposed to say he's going to get it all done in four hours? So I'm just wondering, can we justify the cost?
I do believe we can justify the cost. I mean, and maybe we can, in one second, maybe we can amend the motion to put a cap on it to say to the amount of $1,000, right? Because we have a board budget of $30,000. I should know that off the top of my head, but I don't know if we changed it for this school year. So while you look at that, but maybe that's an option. Ms. Santana.
I think for the fact that we actually speak often and quite eloquently when other departments are presenting or even when Dr. Gasper is speaking so passionately about the need for, you know, things like convocation. I think a lot more was spent on convocation. And that was a little taste of professional development and learning cohesion as a group. We owe it to ourselves that we haven't over the years. And so we need to be able to say, if it is only, even if we are putting a cap on how much, it should be without question because we owe it to ourselves as a group to be able to do this and be able to just have one day to be able to goal set. Go ahead, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I just have a question. As part of CAPE, is that possible for them to provide some money to help us do this without having to pay?
So they will help us set board goals? I do not believe the service is there to set the superintendent goals. So I am definitely of the opinion, and after seven years of being on the board, is having Dr. Gasper present goals to us and we would tweak them with the consultant. And I think that would lessen our time spent dollar-wise, right? But then that's a conversation with Dr. Gasper because I think he has the data. He knows where he could be making the tweaks and saying this is a realistic goal. And then maybe we push you a little bit, you know, it's a stretch goal. So that's why I say we kind of set the limit. And then we can't really have too many conversations outside of here. So.
I would just contribute that I agree it's an incredibly important task that any board does. It's also incredibly difficult, and you should give yourselves credit for how difficult it is. You are volunteer elected officials charged with evaluating somebody who does a job that you have never done. And you should take that seriously because I do. Obviously, you know, in becoming a superintendent, you do that. The purpose of becoming a superintendent is to fulfill the board's goals. What every superintendent hopes is that the goals are rigorous but attainable. Right? What I say to my staff is a good goal makes you a little bit nervous. Not really nervous. It makes you this much nervous, so you up your game just a little bit. And if you do that year after year after year, three to five years from now, we've got some really nice accomplishments for the whole district. So that's why I think it is critical that the board get some assistance in this because you could accidentally set the goals too high and set your superintendent up for failure. Right? You could say, well, but no problem. Get those test scores up 35 percentage points.
I mean, sorry. No, but it's true.
You could do that by accident, and you could also set the goals too low by accident. So somebody like the consultant that the board has engaged in the past is actually quite a unique person because that person has sat on both sides of the table and will give the board good advice. He's actually also an individual that I trust a lot. Somebody from whom I've gained good insight, both in my role here and in my previous district. So I think you have an opportunity to set goals that you believe are meaningful to the district, whether that be school security, curriculum, instruction, test scores. It's critical that they're not too many. And it's critical that they're not too rigorous or not rigorous enough, you know? So getting in that quote-unquote Goldilocks zone is something that would be incredibly difficult for this team of 10 elected volunteers to do, no fault of your own having never sat in this chair. So to get consulting advice from somebody who's not only sat in this chair, but those chairs, I think is a good opportunity for the board.
Mr. Gay. See your virtual hand up.
Yep. So even if this is, comes to $5,000, it's a rounding error in the multi, you know, the over $100 million budget that we operate. I absolutely support that it's a help for the board to set some goals.
And I think if I could be so bold, I believe to build on something Ms. Marino said, the board should be doing its own assessment.
Assessment.
That is in CAPE recommendations. It's in your own guidelines. And that's just to, that's, any good professional practice is to pause and ask yourself, are we conducting ourselves in the way that we aspire to conduct ourselves? And are we moving policies forward in the way that we should? Are we moving curriculum forward in the way that we should? So I would strongly, but as the president said, that is something that I think CAPE could help you with. And then that could plot a course for what is the professional development that the board wants for yourselves? Oh, we need to learn more about X in order to be the best board we can? We need to learn more about FOI. We need to learn more about curriculum. We need to learn more about school safety. So once you did that self-assessment, then you could plot a course of training for yourselves, much in the same way that Ms. Velazquez plots a course for training for our professionals.
I'd be willing to accept this for six hours and $750. I'd be willing to accept a maximum, no more than six hours. That's one professional development day, really. That's more than the time for him to look over the, you know, Dr. Gasper gives him, spreads him goals up. You know, he tweaks this, the consultant tweaks them, and we could review them.
Do you want to put that into a motion?
Yeah, I was just going to say, can you make that a motion?
So I make a motion that we hire the consultant with a maximum of six hours at $125 an hour.
Second.
For discussion, I was just going to say.
Discussion.
Because this seven years, we have taken, I don't know about Merrill, right? We have taken superintendent's data and goals and said, okay, we're going to tweak it. You said 1%. We're going to say 1.25%, right? So depending on where we are, I would like that motion to be capped at 1,000. So that's eight hours.
That's what I'm saying. I think closer to eight hours would actually be.
So can I make a motion to amend your motion?
I even add that, I think six hours, for me, it's a stretching it of. Four hours, that was okay, but six hours, I'm willing to bend. Eight hours, for me, it's $1,000. To me, that's $250. That could buy some textbooks, that could buy stuff for the kids.
It's buying us the ability to be able to make better decisions, Tony. This is the reality of it. We have to learn how to set goals because for years, we have not had a superintendent that was actually.
Oh, my.
So let me just, let's learn. Let's learn all together. Let's have the day, eight hours.
If I may, I would concur with Mr. Gay. In the scope of this board's budget, and if need be, Ms. Velazquez and I can look at existing PD money and allocate that here, reallocate that here. I believe the board should have a long view of this. Again, it works best when a strategic plan for the district is tied to the superintendent's goals, is tied to the board's own evaluation of itself, is tied to the board's goals for itself, not for the district, for how you conduct yourself.
Yes.
So we're not going to spend money that is not for a service delivered. So if the gentleman comes, the consultant comes for five hours, and miraculously, all of that is accomplished, we will pay the consultant for five hours. But I think to only be thinking about the superintendent's goals is too narrow because it's doing one important thing in isolation. So I don't believe we would have trouble reallocating up to $5,000 as Mr. Gay recommends. The board has the ability to call it off at any time. If you work with this person for five hours and you say, this is getting us nowhere, you adjourn and we pay the person for five hours. But if it is going somewhere, it would be shame to be limited by a motion at this table. If it's going great after six hours, and you would really love that person to stay for two more and then come back for two more days, it would be a shame to be limited by a resolution at this table and then have to reconvene perhaps a month later at another board meeting. So I appreciate your fiscal prudence, Mr. Kane, but I don't think it's a realistic concern. I know that if it's not in the board's own line, we can find some money to reallocate from district-wide PD or perhaps even the ESAR grant, right? I think as we look to ways to spend down the remaining ESAR, this is a very applicable way. We would just have to get the board, the state to approve it. But I just, my advice to the board is this is not just the superintendent's goals. When it's done well, it feels like a plan for the next five years of the school district. And as Ms. Marino implied, that begins with the board deciding the long view. It's my job to make the short term come true as your superintendent. It's your job to say things, okay, Dr. Gasper, by three years from now, we would like this. And it's my job to get us there. So while I very much appreciate Mr. Kane's fiscal prudence, I don't believe it's a realistic concern in our budget. And I do agree that it would be money well spent. And again, if you meet with the consultant for four hours and you think it's not going anywhere, we pay the person for four hours. You just adjourn that meeting and you move on.
So where do we stand now?
So. We have Tony's motion on the table, which was to cap it at.
Six hours.
Six hours. So all those in favor of that motion?
I withdraw my motion.
You're going to withdraw? Okay, perfect. We can go back to the original.
Merrill.
Merrill. Pass his hand up.
Okay.
I move that we authorize spending up to $5,000 on a consultant to help us with strategic planning and goal setting.
A second.
All right, so did you get that, Asia? Perfect. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay, okay. So two. Any abstentions? I'm only going to abstain because my time here is short and I don't know how you guys are going to handle. It's like $5,000. I don't know if you'll get it done with $5,000, but.
So, Madam President, could I recommend a roll call vote then?
Yeah, I was just going to say.
Just to make sure we're clear on the.
Yeah, can we do a roll call?
Tina Santana?
Yes.
Ms. Diana Reyes?
Yes.
Ms. Annie Parker?
No.
Ms. Barbara Marino?
Yes, hell yes.
Mr. Anthony Kane with the K?
Yes.
Ms. Monica Dawkins?
Yes.
Mr. Anthony Kane with the C?
No.
Mr. Joseph Lestro?
Yes.
Who's going to be winging your stick?
Yes.
And Ms. Gail Sanders?
I'm going to abstain. Motion carries. Motion to adjourn? So moved.